And I guess we start with the pledge allegiance.
Well, I guess we are.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A material republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, now we can play ball.
Alright. Do a roll call. You, Tim Sangaro?
Present.
Do you do Jen Minkler?
Present.
Sean Talbot?
Here.
Josh Monin here. And Bruce?
Present. And online we have?
Nicole.
An online?
Yeah.
Perfect. Alright. So we were, we have time before the seven thirty. Alright, seven thirty is when welfare discussion, office discussion starts. Do we wanna do our, go into minutes right now or do we wanna do a selectmen report at the beginning here?
You call it.
Alright, we'll do the selecting report.
Yeah.
Selecting report.
Those minutes are so fun.
Right?
Get in front of by that minute.
Alright. So in last night's select board meeting, we set the hours for trick or treat to be on Tuesday, ten thirty-one, October thirty-first, which is Halloween, from five to seven. Also, we scheduled a public hearing for the folks up on Old Beaver Road to discuss their terms of the town accepting the road as a town-maintained road. That date is October twenty-fourth at seven PM, right here at the town office. So I encourage anybody who has any input to please come and voice their concern or support for such things. And we will be making a decision that night.
What was that, what was that, sorry?
Old Beaver Road. And that's about all I have.
Alright, that was quick.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be able to get to minutes now.
Oh yeah.
Alright, land use report?
Okay. We may have an application coming in for a subdivision on Appleton. Because Fieldstone called to confirm the application and the subdivision regulations on the website. And I'm very glad he did because, for whatever reason, when I entered the new ones with the changes in July, they didn't get added. So, the correct ones are now on the website. He has been sent the application and the subdivision regs that are coming. So who knows when that's coming in? Also, if you remember, for Brookhaven, one of the requirements was that they didn't want to have an erosion control plan for the whole subdivision, they wanted it for each individual lot. So Sue is doing her due diligence and when she's receiving a driveway permit, two this week, we had to advise them, one being Ben Crook and another being someone who bought from Brookhaven, that the erosion control plan is needed and to be reviewed by the planning board engineer prior to the driveway permit. So, I have posted the subdivision register plan on every lot so that it's there. Clearly, you can, Sue can provide it to them so that they know that it's a requirement. I emailed Ben to advise him that we can't give him the driveway permit until he does get an erosion control plan. So I can foresee this happening with the rest of the lots.
So, that gentleman, one of the, that other gentleman came in this evening and was encouraged to see that he actually did have an erosion control plan as a part of his setup plans. So they are prepared, that way it looks like. So hopefully, it'll just be a matter of talking to Bert, submitting it to Bert, going out and meeting with him, like to show where it has to go.
Oh, so he does have an erosion?
He does have one, yep.
Oh.
Yep. Yeah, the whole thing's all planned out and where it's gonna, you know, cross the river there.
Yeah.
He's already got that all approved by the state. And all that, so he's ready to rock and roll up there.
So is he the one that did call for that?
Yes, yeah, he must've, cause he has a whole list of names, so he must've
Talked.
Given him a bunch of contacts.
Sue talked to him?
Yeah, yeah, so she did good that way, but like just let him know that Bert first, then Peter as a road agent. And they should be good. So he's all squared away now.
And is that the process, that's the process going forward for, you know, for anybody else coming in? They would, they would see, they, how do they know to see Bert first? Is there a way to?
Or, they could give it to Sue or I and we can submit it to Bert for review. Because, and it would probably be better that way so that it doesn't get lost in a shuffle. Where, if they provide it to Sue or I, and Bert, and Bert, or, you know, one of the three of us or all three of us, so that we're all in the loop. Because what I do and what Sue does is dependent on what Bert does.
Yep, yeah, so the theory Bert should let Susan know that
Right.
the erosion control plan's there and it's good. Cause he doesn't, he doesn't actually have to put the cell fence in before he gets to that point. You know, cause he can access the property to, like, build the road up to the certain point that he needs it to go in. Cause it's about four hundred and fifty feet, like from-
Building a road?
A driveway.
Thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That one's long, so they're all a bit different, cause we approve these things with different sets of approvals each time. And that's where it gets a little bit messy.
Yeah.
So one aspect that we might wanna look at going forward is to, when we have that approval, submittal, try to relay back to the property owner, like, that they're gonna wanna give the next set of steps to whoever purchases the land. So we don't have to go through twelve different same conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's, that was kinda the thing. If we feel like, when they come in looking for a driveway permit and we're like, hey, you need your, you need your erosion control, and then, is there a way to make it so that, so that they are aware of that prior to them asking for it? Would that be, would that be a, a condition or how would you, how would you actually make?
I'm not sure, cause like tonight he saw that there was a meeting posted and that the select board was gonna be here, so he thought he had to come in and show the select board.
Okay.
Because in some towns, the select board are the road agents and would authorize those, like the driveway cuts. But not in our community. So there's just some clarification on our office end, like as people call in, just to kinda-
He said somebody told him to come in tonight cause the, the selectman would be here.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, which is good and nice and fine, cause it worked out for, able to get them squared away and, yeah. So, yep. So it all worked.
Yeah, nice.
Just went around in a loop.
Yeah. Yeah, man, if we get good at it, then you can do that loop pretty fast on each one of the lots.
Yeah.
Hopefully not, but anything else on that, for land use?
There's also another issue that I'm working with the assessors on, however, it's their busy time. There's confusion as to the gravel pit and what gravel pit the lots were on. So it's D, gravel pit D. They removed that from Avatar. And only gravel pit C is in Avatar. And they merged those two. So there's a little confusion there, so we're working on that and hopefully that will get resolved soon.
Jen, because it's gravel pits, is that Brookhaven gravel?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a Brookhaven property.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you're set to go up there at the end of the month, right then?
Where you're going, yeah, twenty-first.
But that's, that really doesn't affect the gravel pit, that's just our internal assessing.
Understood. Yeah, so there was an avatar change.
Yep.
With C and D merged. Okay.
So, oh, Nicole and I did hard road to travel training today. It was quite different from prior hard road to travels, which I was glad that I took it again because it was more about the actual roads and the regulations and requirements than going through the book itself, actually. There wasn't much that I didn't learn already. But it was worth taking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because there was a lot about, you know, the selectmen's control and- It was different content than they have in the past. And that's it, that's all I have, I think.
Thank you. I think we still-
Question, Jen? Is that, is that tape going to be on the website to be viewed by other staff or?
What tape?
The hard road to travel. The recording.
Yeah, it will be available.
Okay.
Yeah. It won't be on the website, we don't put them on the website.
No.
But if you want-
NHMA does.
NHMA does, yeah.
So, when you, when you get a notification that that happens, could you make a note to just let me know about it?
Sure.
Thank you.
And is that a free webinar on its, online?
No. Oh, online, the recording is.
Yeah.
The class was fifty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Which are selectmen budget.
Right. So, we are, we can move into minutes. I think we have, other than minutes, it's, it's a old new business that we can peel into, but we might as well try to knock off minutes. Yeah, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna look at Sean a lot here.
Don't worry. What are you starting with, eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty, yeah.
And you all about my email about Liz's changes yesterday?
I saw the email, I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Yeah.
Well, I do wanna kinda make a statement.
Sure.
It's very difficult for me, especially on a Tuesday prior to a Wednesday meeting, or even a Wednesday, to get things to review, to post, to let you be aware of. Because I have board of assessors on Tuesday and from here on in, it's gonna be busy.
Yeah.
And things may get overlooked. You know what I mean?
Yep, you can set those expectations to, for others, like as they try to fast-track stuff, cause it's almost like we should abide by the same general guidelines as we do applicants, ask of applicants. You know, so it's kinda-
And I do post everything and give the agenda the Thursday before.
Yep.
And, you know, there were changes made to the August thirtieth minutes, which were a month ago, you know, almost.
Yeah, yeah, and you're referencing that.
More than a month ago.
The changes, the, 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 the changes on the meetings, the, the minutes rather, coming in late and, and not having enough done to post, but, yeah, I think if we, uh, so it's, it's kinda nice to have them early, but, but if we don't get them and we get them in here, then that's just-
I mean, I understand this. Circumstances that are out of, under people's control that they can't, you know, but it's difficult for me
Yep.
A day before the day of.
Gotcha, make sure that's in the minutes for everybody to see. Just kidding. Funny, not funny.
Well, I have a question. So, if someone sends you changes, like, do you have to change them and then send them out to everybody to review? Or can you just bring us the changes at the meeting?
I, I-
Is that more helpful?
I could, however, that, I still have to do that, print them out, bring them to the meeting. I still have to put them in Dropbox for everyone to see, really. Because it's still added work.
Do you, do you have to, or can we, can we just reference the, the email that comes in to you? You know, the, if it comes in late enough, where if you, if I was to send you my, my changes last night and, and we had it, would you be able to just take that email and say, alright, these are the, these are the few that, that were sent last night? And, uh, do we agree and, and you're-
See, not from here.
No, okay.
Cause like, you know what I mean, so I would have to print them out.
Yeah.
Have them ready for the meeting.
Okay.
So, August thirtieth.
Changes on August thirtieth. You wanna read right through them, Sean? Do you wanna?
Yeah, well, I kinda, yeah, right. Scan through, I only picked up one, but it's on page four.
I picked up one on the prior page.
What do you mean?
Yep. I got page two, paragraph that starts with seven thirty-eight.
Yep.
There's a missing not. That properties in his neighborhood that have issues that are not being addressed.
Hmm, okay.
And I, cause I wanna make sure that the complement to prime roofing is clear. And so I don't know if I'm, need to accuse myself of being a buttered or whatever, but that's-
Yeah, no, I mean, that's-
The second paragraph?
Yeah. Sounds like that's what you were trying to say.
That are not being addressed, is the concern. And I thought that prime roofing's, you know, following the process was awesome. Kinda like the outcome, but that doesn't matter, it's, they followed everything that they're supposed to do.
That definitely changes what's being said there.
Right, that's a big difference.
Yeah, yeah, I know, the not makes it, yes.
So if you weren't in this meeting, then
Now-
Then you would've said something different.
So, the next paragraph, you know, Craig question mark, that's my question mark. I wasn't sure if it was Craig that said that. I couldn't make out.
Probably.
This was after Liz, he did, he did comment on Liz's comment.
I agree, I think it, I'm pretty sure it was Craig.
Thank you. Just wanted to be sure.
Yep. Yeah, do we have, on page three, you said you had something, Tim?
No, I just-
Oh, that was just a-
That was, yeah, yeah, before page four was-
And you're in agreement with Liz that she's not concerned about the use? That was her change, you had that change?
Yeah. Yeah.
What was you, oh, you're still looking, Sean?
Yeah, oh, yeah, so page four. On, uh, to the fourth paragraph, first sentence, like right at the end of the first line. Just after being built, just a space.
Oh, yeah, and it's not after, it's after.
Yep.
I really should proofread better.
It gets back to the time thing.
Yeah. But his makes way, come on.
Yeah.
Now, for that, that same page, page four, for Liz's comment, Chair Deidre still has growth questions and there is room for five admin, for nine administrators. What she was saying in that is the growth of the business and that there is room for nine administrators. So, how better would I state that?
Sounds satisfying to me.
What's, what's your question of a clarity, cause I have a suggestion, but I don't-
Well, Liz put question marks on that.
Oh, so I think, I think the word administrators could be employees.
I, is that what she's questioning, or is she questioning whether the, like, Chair Deidre still has growth questions and that there is room for not, you're, you know, something-
That there is-
So where it's not just falling into-
It could be, yeah, but I, my int-
Yeah, it's hard to know without hearing it again, but-
Yeah. Well, yeah, because I think, I believe the, the concerns were, were what happens with growth in the, in the business, with-
Exactly, and I think that's part of our planning board job, is to imagine the future.
Yeah.
And growth, cause every business has to grow, so they may be under a constraint to say they need to put forty people in there, so then what?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, right now, there's room for nine administrators. What are we doing?
It is, could use a lot of clarification, but I think if you add that word, at least it kinda flows and-
How about we just get rid of it completely? As growth questions, period.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
I agree, yep.
It's fine.
Shorten up a little bit, you know?
You guys ever look at our minutes?
A little more succinct.
We're busy looking at ours.
Looks like you're correct, too.
Ours look like they're about a quarter of the length of these.
Oh, some of, some of ours aren't quite this long, though.
No. We've had situations that need to be specific.
I understand the reasoning behind it.
Thank you. Oh, first page, I put exception and it's exemption?
Special exception, uh, I thought that's what they call it, though.
So they should be exemption.
Um, is that true? Did you-
First page, he says?
Yeah.
Was it in your-
There's three exceptions.
Highlighted exception.
Yeah, so it is a special exception.
Okay, it is.
You're accepted, rather than exempted from the requirement. Is that all of them? Make a motion to accept the minutes of August thirtieth as amended?
Second it.
Roll call, or not roll call, you can call in favor. Say aye. All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Alright, we have six minutes. Did we hear?
Minutes at nine-twenty, yeah.
And there's five pages, so a minute per page.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This is gonna be, Craig missed out on this meeting, cause this is gonna be one that we get out in time.
Imagine if Carrie, like, forgotten.
No, I got confirmation that she's coming.
Starting to get nervous.
Yeah. So this is the minutes of September twentieth.
So how nitpicky do we get on this? Do we pick out commas in the wrong spot or extra spaces?
Sure.
Well, how about we don't? Like, my word processor does the, the blue underlines for grammar and
Perfect.
You know, there's far too many to bother with. It just, it's just like, it's just like rewordings, and it's like all these things that like, does it affect the meeting? No. It's just trying to clean up the writing, but, yeah, mine is like splattering ink all over the place, but-
Why, do you have one that's really bad?
Well, no, I have a couple small corrections.
Don't take offense at any of them.
Don't hold it back, Bruce.
So work it on it.
I don't know, my point being, I'm not sure that I care.
I'm gonna skip the, the misplaced drama, I don't care about that. But under citizens in attendance, I think Patricia Chalk, I think her last name is spelled C-H-A-L-K-E?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. That's a good one, cause we don't want her name wrong.
Oh, yeah.
And then there are a couple of other places, I'll have to find them, but I think you accidentally put her in here as Patricia Clark.
Yeah, bottom of two, well, twice, there's two paragraphs on the bottom, two or four.
Clark, yeah.
Uh, but then, under the selectmen chair land use report in the third paragraph in, where you mentioned, it says, Chair Deidre found a document of a remo's gravel pit that noticed the site, oh wait, hold on, I went to, I went, hold on. Up, up one more sentence. Chair Deidre reviewed and advised the dates of the meeting are the first and third of each month. Should you put the meetings are the first and third Wednesday of each month?
Yes, I should.
Yeah, that's useful.
That's all I've got for this second.
Okay. Page two. Is everyone in agreement with Liz's change file a reclamation plan?
Yes.
Okay. And page three, there was a reclamation plan?
Yep.
Page four. I had dumped across and it should be drove across. But he did, she did mention dumped across.
Oh, maybe.
His yard.
Yeah, I think, drove across and then dumped it.
He, yeah, he did mention that there was stuff that fell out on the way-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I don't think that was the main idea.
Drove across, I think.
And then he advised Patricia is, remove, it is her best interest. Remove the is, it is. And should, should be should.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
On page five, are we on that yet, or are we still on four?
No, go ahead.
Where, what is the parentheses, please insert a copy of the waiver language here, is that meant to be there?
Ah, I did not even see that, that must've been a D request. Hold on. Yeah, that was her request, which I didn't do. Thank you for pointing that out, didn't even see that.
You're welcome. And then, the only other thing right below that, where it says hands-off and handshakes, I think it's supposed to be handoffs and handshakes?
Where is that?
Right below, please insert a copy of the waiver language, the document of hands-off, it should be handoffs and handshakes.
There's three letter As in that sentence. Designed, uh, 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 guiding document.
What?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It must be as a guiding document, I would assume.
Clearly, I was rushing these, yeah.
Yeah, as a-
Process flow with rules and responsibilities and designed?
As a-
As a. Uh, uh, uh.
Alright. Anything else? Make a motion to accept the minutes of September twentieth as amended?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any extensions, Tim? Alright.
Insane.
We are like, almost right on time, so. I believe Carrie is right there. Carrie Carrie is now here. Needs to be ready.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
You magic party mug.
Oh, oh, nice. Do I get solar change? Oh, there. Solar. What?
Thanks for coming in tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
We got the select board here too, so
Okay.
Sorry, the planning board seems to be a little bit light this evening.
Um, we're missing a few members, uh, but Nicole's on Zoom.
I'm gonna show you on for Nicole.
Back the other way.
Hi, everyone. Hi.
More. Oh, Carrie's out of frame. You gotta point at the camera at her, yeah. There we go.
Zach, can you see her, Nicole?
Perfect, thank you. Hi, Carrie.
Hi, Nicole.
Oh, good, and it's not moving.
So, I guess nor- normally D is our chair, and I'm filling in for her, so maybe a little bit, little bit off on how this formally goes, but. But I guess if you're ready, I don't, I don't know why.
But I say, what do you got for us?
Glad he's recording, I haven't recorded this shit.
Is that what it is? What do you got for us?
What do you got for us?
Lay it on us.
Well, actually.
Recording in progress.
Wondering, yeah, like, you guys said call, wanna call the meeting and wanted to talk about housing?
Yes.
Okay, like, that's like a real big subject.
Yeah, so.
Can I, can I?
Absolutely.
I voiced a couple of concerns, and part of it is because of what I'm thoughtful of and looking out for the town. Um, part of it is that we understand that there's a, the governor has communicated to a lot of the towns that you need a diversity of housing. And when somebody is either temporarily or chronically out of a home, there's not a lot of capacity here.
Right.
And so we've heard from a couple, I've heard from a couple sources, and we've heard as a board, that a lot of the people who are homeless have to go out of town. Causes, I think there's a fair housing plan, like to get your views on that if you have any. Um, and then, it's important to me to understand what the demand is, what the needs are. And then potentially look at like the E D U, accessory dwelling unit, plans, regulations, procedures, as a possible solution. And then potentially just see like what, what you perceive from the needs of the town over the services you provided. And see if there's any way that we can assist, or or just be informed in order to make better decisions. Does that help? Kind of stretch of that.
Sure, right.
Okay.
No, there, there's definitely been, you know, as everybody is well aware of, of the housing crisis that we're in. And I have been to multiple meetings, and we still continue, I just had one on Tuesday night in Peterborough. Um, I have another one, I mean, we're just, we're all trying to come together, because right now, the cities, they cannot, they don't even have enough room for their own people, and then we're used to utilizing them and going there to Manchester for Southern Hampshire, to Keene for Southwestern. So those were the shelters that are at, um, and they have no room for our people, they have no room. And we do have homeless cases, we've had an increased number of them in the past few years, more than I've ever seen, and I've been doing this job for a while. So definitely on the increase, again, it's not daily here, but it's definitely weekly at times, so. Um, and they have, they have no room for our, our people, no room, so they've asked us to be, um, going forward, if we could come up with a plan to help and to have some sort of options for people to go.
Okay, so, um, what's the profile of a homeless person in noopsuits, like, what? What kind of propels them into that, where did they come from?
Well, it could be, I mean, obviously, you're thinking, when we think homeless, um, the city, we're thinking of somebody sitting, you know, on the median there with a sign saying, you know, I don't have a job, whatever, pushing a grocery cart around Walmart, I mean, here, that's not what you're gonna see typically, right? Um, first of all, we don't have any stoplights, but anyway, so, they could hang on a blinker lights, I guess. But what we have here in rural towns is couch surfing, so people will bop around on couches, um, until we can find them a place um, to live, and I mean, and some people are tenting, I mean, that is possible, they have, in the warmer months, or we put them at campgrounds. Um, and if they are homeless, we try to get them a hotel.
These, when you're talking about like homeless people in noopsuits, they're like, maybe they grew up here, but then maybe their home situation, their family situation kind of broke down, and now they're just like, trying to find somewhere to live.
So many different, different scenarios, Bruce, like, we go from people just coming here, um, and have been here for a short while, for some reason or another, and are living with somebody and it didn't work out, and now they're looking for a place, I mean, there's so many different scenarios, I mean, it, it just could be like, it could just could be anything, I could just, you know, normally, obviously, the normal homeowner and, or person that, a family member that's renting, you don't see typically that they're, um, that they're homeless, I mean, those kind of situations don't come up as often. Now, I did have a family a couple of years ago, um, and their situation, we did house them in a hotel, a hotel in Nashville for six months, and we bussed the kids um, back and forth to Nashville for six months, it might even have been up to eight months, it felt like it was a full school year. Um, and their situation was, um, the, she was living with her parents, single mom, five children, father died, and it was just the mom and her and the five children, and they lost their house. Okay, bank took the house, they had nowhere to go, nowhere, there was no place to house seven people.
Alright.
In the middle of the winter. So, had to put them in hotels, so, I mean, I, I could sit here all night and go through situations, there's just so many, you're not gonna want me to, but.
Yeah, that's good to get a profile, it's like, yep, that's good.
I think with the, with us, what we, what we are gonna be, I think, what I'm looking for anyways, is, is kind of that context to know what, what is our, what is the problem in town? But then also, what is the board's, what can, we only have a, a really limited, uh, action on the board, but to know what, what are other towns doing, but then, you know, is there any, is there any movement on, on other towns, what are, what are people actually doing that?
Absolutely.
I, I got a couple, I got, I made four themes along Bruce's ideas too, that I wanted to get out there.
Um, so what other towns are doing, this is just all the chart, I mean, a lot of paperwork, we have, there's, you know, there's all kinds of paperwork, um, that I had to print it out, but I, I didn't. Um, oh, sorry, Jason, go ahead, um, the printer's not working, is there a couple there, one?
Oh, cheesy, could be because of the power.
Yeah, it was getting a little wonky, um, just like three, three more, I, I had it on there for three, Jen. So, other towns, for instance, okay, you wanna hear about other towns? Okay, so I, I also do the welfare for Jaffrey, okay? So I'm over there doing the welfare, um, higher volume than here, basically, um, it always has been, and now in the last few years, even more so. Um, so there's a transitional shelter in Jaffrey that we put, um, people at, so it's like an apartment, um, complex. So it's called Shelter From The Storm, and they manage six apartment, six apartment units. So, say, San Ken, so the, these are the different ideas they do over there, they have, um, different rental management companies, and they'll go and ask if they could, there's an agreement where they get to rent one apartment for, like, the people that we put in there, so. Say, San Ken, for instance, here, we would say, okay, can we have one apartment tour, for the transitional shelter? And then, so what, they would get paid every month, um, and I split it, we split it, they pay half, I pay half. Um, so the town pays half, the town Jaffrey pays half for, for any resident that we have in there, so it could be a resident from Ridge also in there, not just Jaffrey. They have taken noopsuit people also.
Yeah.
There's possibly, they're gonna be taking another one of our residents soon. Um, so, they, how we house people, they house people up to six to eight months, they have a fully furnished apartment. Um, and then what happens, we don't just put them in there and leave them there, they obviously need some sort of guidance. Um, so, we, there's case managers on board and, um, different other people involved in the board, and they go and visit them every week. They check in, they're supposed to be doing job searches, if they don't have a job, they're supposed to be signing up for childcare, getting their kids in school, I mean, just different scenarios, that having to, you know, sign up for A P T card, um, insurance, anything that they haven't done, they have to do, and they have to report back, and they have to put away um, so much of their paycheck if they aren't working, and they, Shelter takes the percentage of the pay. And then when they move out, they have a deposit for, um, their apartment, so it's a really nice program. And it really works, and we have a lot of success with it, I mean, there's a few that it doesn't work out, but there's rules, there's no drinking, there's no, um, drugs, and there's no tolerance for it, we find it, you're out, like, you, you know beforehand, this is a chance to help you, like, you don't have to pay rent, basically, for six to eight months. And, so, if there's a problem, they're out, so it's really, it's really structured and, um, fairly strict, um, but it works. Um, so they take us, I mean, first, they take Jaffrey residents, and then if they have room, they'll, they'll branch out, basically, it's Jaffrey, Ridge first. They'll branch out to Peterborough, Greenfield, New Upswitch, Greenville, so I have utilized them for our town. Um, they have, we have met with them, um, the board, the board director, she wasn't here a couple of years ago, I believe. And she said they would be willing to take on, uh, an apartment in New Upswitch, a transitional apartment. She would, they would be willing to oversee it, meaning the case managers would have to travel to New Upswitch to meet with the client, but they would do it if somebody would be willing to step forward.
So, clarify what you said before, the town pays half and what, the rental managers subsidize the house?
It's the other.
Um, no, Shelter From The Storm.
Oh.
Okay. They have fundraise, they have money, yeah.
Okay, so, got it.
Yeah. So they're getting paid every month, the landlord is getting paid every month, it is, you're getting your, your pay.
And these, the units in Jaffrey aren't necessarily contiguous, they're just one unit here and one unit there.
Yeah.
And Shelter From The, do we have an organization like Shelter From The Storm in New Upswitch?
No.
So that's something else that might be missing, or would be an advantage to have?
It would, although I don't know that we need five or six apartments here, um, so they would be have, she said they would be willing, they met, the board okayed it, they would be willing to oversee an apartment here for us.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Like, instead of us having, it's, it's a huge deal, you guys, it's no joke, I mean, and there's a lot of work involved in this transitional shelter. It's, it's been going on for the past ten or twelve years, I think, and it's great, it's really great, it helps a lot of people, we have a lot of single moms and kids that we help a lot, and sometimes, guys, some women, we do, we don't, I mean, we have both, but we see a lot of the single moms, so some couples.
People now that I talked about, so many people.
I guess.
Yeah, I gotta ask Sean to refresh my memory, but it comes to mind that the town may have deeded a trailer in Valencourt Trailer Park, and is that something we could look at to?
Or we chose not to?
Deed it.
Also, it's not deeded, but it's on the list that it could be.
Correct.
And, so my thought is, is that something that could get fixed up and could be used for Carrie's department, temporarily house people?
I'm not sure how that would work with the, um, trailer park association, but yeah, it's def- definitely a potential, yeah.
I just have to kind of get on it and ask, um, some landlords, I know I've put it out to San Ken, they're like my, feel like go-to, because they have a lot of apartments that they manage, it seems like more than anybody that I know of. Um, and we just don't have a lot in here, in town, guys, we just don't, don't have a lot.
And as far as services go, the services that they need are in other towns, and there's no way to get there.
Right.
What is the rental capacity in New Upswitch, is it sufficient? Is there enough rental units?
No.
Oh, no.
Okay, and, is, do you have a sense of how to estimate that, because that's where it ties in with the E D U?
Right, well, the two, I mean, this is statewide, but the vacancy rate is point six percent.
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, if you post a rental online, it's just like a deluge, just like endless inquiry, like rentals don't remain empty.
Okay, so, so, so we, we need more capacity? And, and is it also like a call to action to find one unit that we could designate or contribute to the, what's the name of the place in Jaffrey?
Um, Shelter From The Storm.
Shelter From The Storm.
That would be so helpful, you guys, you have no idea, we're just really struggling in Greenville and New Upswitch, and if it's Greenville too, like, if we could, I work in Greenville also, so I mean, we're really close with situ, you know, we, we share the food pantry in Greenville. And I would like to work with Greenville also, um. They're, they're, they're not as, our, our, um, my volume here is exceeding Greenville.
Okay, and, and I'm like trying to seek to identify problems, right, we don't, we haven't had a plan yet, just wanna give you a follow-up.
Yeah, no, I.
The other.
I literally would, it would, you don't understand, I probably, five years ago, I would say, no, we're fine, we're not fine right now, I have, I could, have used that space and many times over.
What's the foreclosure pace? So I've heard a couple comments saying that foreclosures happen now faster than before, do you have a perspective on that?
I do not have a perspective on foreclosures, I, I don't know, I think it depends on the bank, but I haven't been dealing with a lot of foreclosures. I don't see a lot of, um, help with mortgages coming through highway.
Neither of the deeds.
Yeah, so, our, we're, we're basically rentals right now.
Understand, and three more questions, but I'll get to them later, keep going. Alright, so how is Shelter From The Storm set up, um, in respects to the town of Jaffrey? Like, how do they operate, is that an arm of Jaffrey, like, the Jaffrey Town Government, or?
Has nothing to do with a private.
Yeah, so, so it wouldn't be something that we would necessarily set up, but look for like a private company to maybe run? Because that's one thing that kind of came to mind with the trailer, we don't manage properties, so.
Right, and I was saying, it could be gifted to.
Oh, like, yeah.
To shelter to the, of the storm.
Okay, alright, interesting, yeah, just to try to keep like the town out of.
Yeah, because we don't wanna grow the government, because we'll make more homeless people.
But then, Valencourt would have to approve that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was just a thought off the top of my head as she was talking.
It's, we have, we literally have to be creative at this point, like, that's what we're doing, they're asking us to be creative, we need to like, so, for another instance, in Jaffrey, okay, you asked about Jaffrey, so I started with the transitional shelter, right, they also have an emergency shelter at the Quaker House. So there's a Quaker House off of two oh two?
Yeah.
Going to Peterborough, right?
Yeah.
From Jaffrey, so, Quaker Meeting House is still there, and they have opened up a small room to be able to utilize for, we can put emergency people, emergency, um, situations over there, so that requires, when I say emergency, it requires we can place somebody, it's a very short application, very quick, it can be done in a day, like, everything can move really quick when I say emergency. Now Shelter, it's an application process, an application with me, it's an application with Shelter From The Storm, we sit down and meet with the client, we interview them, we don't take everybody that we interview, okay, so they have to, they, they have to be interviewed, it has to be, the situation has to be okay to take, okay? So we have to prove, there's a board involved, so when I say the Quaker House, that's an emergency shelter, they have set up a studio, little studio apartment, that's just basically a room, bed, little living room, TV, and then, yeah, couch, and then on the side, it's like a kitchen at like microwave, like, um, it's not a real stove, just a, yeah, toaster oven. So it's meant to stay about two weeks to a month, I mean, there's been situations where we have people in there longer, but that's, that's how quick it is. So the Quakers have, and they don't charge nothing to the town, to us, nothing, and so that's something else to think about, that's something that they, they, they were able to do, which was really helpful. Um, so, we have that, that, and the, there's a church in Greenfield, um, there's a little apartment, they, they built some in the church somehow. Um, I haven't never seen it, but we put the pastor down, he oversees that in Greenfield. Um, there's, I meet once a month, um, with, um, housing committee, and there's just different agencies, and we're on it, and this is what we do, we just brainstorm, think of different ways, um, oh, there's, I think in Peterborough, there's gonna be another pop-up emergency shelter, also, they're working on it, there's another church in Peterborough. So, they, so they basically go down the list, okay, Carrie, so, what, what's going on with your town?
I wanna cover something, so I just wanna make sure it's clear to the select board, is that I came prepared to say that I think we have a very important advocacy and problem-solving role, and communication role, essentially, to kind of get the word out and come up with ideas, so I just wanna make sure it's clear. I just see us as kind of like listeners, problem solvers, and communicators to help, so I just wanted to share that, so that's where I'm driving. Um, so the Shelter From The Storm, so like, what does that enforcement look like when somebody violates one of the protocols, like, if, heaven forbid, you walk in and you see someone using a needle, right? What is the, are the police working with that organization, and wouldn't noopsuit police have to work with us?
Okay, so, yeah, they get background checks, so the police are involved in all of the clients that we place in the shelter, so they have the whole background check before we even can place them, okay, and it has to come back.
Understood, yeah.
So, if it's, you know, drugs are. So if it's, you know, drugs or alcohol, basically, it's a. Sit there and tell them, you cannot have this in the property, we do not, I mean, there's, there's warnings for different things, but. There, something like that, there's usually no warning, it, it may have to be voted on if they have to leave, but with me, we discuss it. We would pull them in, you know, we let them know, and then most likely would be on their way if that was the case, because we have no tolerance that. No, if they go in and the house is a mess, there's a warning, like you're supposed to keep tidy, the house tidy, the apartment tidy, right? And we ask what we ask, um, and we feel like this is a privilege, I mean, you're basically using this apartment, I mean, and you shouldn't be trashing it. And if it is trashed, and there's a problem, and then there's like noise, you know, other tenants complaining about the noise, about. Too many things going on, back and forth, late nights, then we pull them in, there'd be a warning with me. You know, it's done professionally, like, it's not just.
Just not a lot of burden or time, the municipal authorities don't really get involved?
No, not at all, it is, there's nothing, there's no involvement whatsoever, they know nothing. They are built, I, I am built by Shelter From the Storm, and I got a check every month, beginning of the month for the apartments, they, they are not involved at all.
And it's shelters still only in an eight month timeframe that they can stay? So they don't provide, say there was an alcoholic or drug person. They don't provide like requirement for to go to AA or DA or anything to help?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Oh, they do.
Right, right, um, we encourage all of that, there's reality check in Jaffrey, you know, you have to be there, going to the meetings and whatnot, and be actively involved. We have dealt with different situations like that, but we cannot, we cannot get involved in drugs and alcohol, it's just too messy for us. We, this is a, I got a privilege, I said that these landlords, landlords are renting to us, and we take, um, take that highly. We don't wanna mess with any drugs or alcohol, and then they take away our apartment, if things get too, we get, we have to screen, we have to.
I've got a question. I would imagine that some of the people that are being housed in this facility, Shelter From the Storm, um, would have jobs.
Right.
How are they getting to work?
Oh, um, some people have cars, most people, most of them have vehicles, if not, then we've been known to find them vehicles. We get donations, um, and they have funds that they can put toward a vehicle if somebody needs a vehicle. So we look for like a cheap vehicle.
So they basically need some kind of shelter that um, would have parking spaces for government people going through there?
Yes. And we want people to have jobs when they're there, they don't really take them, if they, there has to be something that works, or if. They're getting like um, cash assistance, like a single mom, if she has a baby, you know, require, and she's getting cash assistance, we wouldn't require her to. Be having a job right now, when the baby gets a little older, then she can, she could start looking for a job, or looking for childcare.
Yeah, my, my concern is that in this town, we don't have any kind of transportation.
Right.
Available for either going shopping for food, like uh, like gym, or whatever, you know, visiting doctors, or, or healthcare. Whatever, and, and also, I don't know what would be available for. For work in, within a reasonable distance from this area.
I don't know, we all work here, so, yeah, I don't, I, I guess it depends on the profile of the person, but. It sounds like most of your, the people in that program are, you know, they're able to function in society, they're just. Having a hard time paying rent and having a security deposit, and like, they're just like behind, and they need to get, catch up. Yeah, but I think, I mean, if you're in this area, you're like, if you don't have transportation, then you are walking the streets, so probably if.
But, you know, and you're talking one thing, but if you're looking at people that have been displaced from someplace else. And they're coming over here or into Jaffrey or some other town. Yeah, their travel distances may be a lot further than what they were accustomed to, or what was available to them before.
Yeah, I think kind of what I've been hearing is that we currently don't have spaces for people that are coming out of New Ipswich. And we're actually sending our own people out to these other communities, not necessarily that the other communities are looking for space here. They just want us to be able to house our own people that are in these scenarios. So though down the line, I think that's part of the, the overall fear or hesitation to some of this discussion. Was, was not to become a uh, like, like a community.
A transient.
Yeah, like where we, you know, take in excess. Uh, but in finding that, that right uh, path, like to walk, you know. And not get there, though, because someone coming down from the state potentially may. Gear it that way, it sounds like, where they're gonna force, you know, certain housing structures and the town governments to, you know. Make those steps, even though we're not looking to do that, right, is that what you've heard too, like to actually build buildings?
Right.
Like for shelters and.
Right. And so you're right about this, we're basically looking for to house our own, okay, so. I mean, occasionally, somebody from a surrounding town might utilize that, but basically, it's New Ipswich or Greenville first would be in the, in the, in the shelter. Because I'm, he's right, I'm outsourcing people out of town, so they're, we're having to bus them to school. Okay, so if I take somebody from New, somebody from New Ipswich, she has, she's a single mom with two kids, okay, I'm gonna put her in the shelter, an apartment in Jaffrey, right? She works in New Ipswich, you know, and her children go to school in New Ipswich, so now we have to go, get the bus, the bus has to come and. Transport the children back and forth. And also, in the shelter, you would ask about transportation, I just wanna let you know that we, if they don't have a car, we work really hard to get them some sort of transportation. And also, um, there was a single guy one time we had in the shelter, and he, um, we got him a bike, so he could ride to Market Bass, get him back to his job. And that worked out well, they saved enough for a car, so there's different ways. Like, one lady right now, she works at Dollar General, and she walks to work, you know, like in Jaffrey, like we have her, she lives in Jaffrey, walks to work. So, so there's, there's options.
So what's the trouble with getting that engagement or buy-in from the local property owners? Like to offer up a unit, because I'm sure that you've been in touch with, you know, numerous different property owners, and you've mentioned one this evening. Um, but there's not that solid commitment, it sounds like.
No solid commitment yet, I think they just need to learn more about it. No, I'll just share the question.
Yeah, so Sean kind of took the words out of my mouth, but I was kind of wondering, what has that feedback been like, I was just kind of seconding the question.
So, um, I'll be honest, not a lot of feedback, because I actually haven't got a lot of word out there either. I mean, I mentioned it one to the company that I told you about, kind of keeping my ears open for other people that I can ask. But I really haven't been pushing it too much, because, I mean.
I wonder if we could draft.
That's, no, but my question kind of with, with that is, what is, what is a productive outreach to, to that? You know, what, in the past, in, for Jaffrey, how did those apartments come to be, how did the, how does the conversation with the, with the church happen? What's, what are the first steps to that, and obviously not that everybody wants to leave here calling up their, their church and saying, hey, we. You know, there's, there's gotta be a level of, of uh, what's effective on, on asking for that space and, and uh.
And we have that all on paper, we have a whole document on that, that we can provide the churches with.
And is that the, is that the steps, though, that you, you, I guess, what's, how often would you, would you reach out to people? And, and is that the process to reaching out, just delivering them documents, you know, or?
Yeah, for the churches, um, I have to ask um, the lady in charge, she was, I was talking to her tonight, she's really good. Um, she, you know, meets with a lot of towns, she wasn't able, I didn't invite her tonight, I should have, she's really informative, she was helping me um. With what to say, um, and, you know, just kind of getting it out to towns, because she deals a lot with this. And she's Erica, being on from Southern Services, and if we ever have another meeting, I'll probably have her come and talk to you. She, you know, she does really well, and she's on the housing um, meeting coalition that I was telling you about, that meets monthly. That we're pushing for those shelters, for those pop up ones, for those, anything for churches, for, you know, for, for anyone. She is actually, I got her involved with the Friendship Manor, um, with the guys over there, so we could possibly start. Um, the ball rolling over there with different meetings, so we've met, we had a Zoom call with them a couple of months ago. Um, so she's been involved there, because I'm like, oh, we need, we need to get this going, you know, we need to, we need to, we need to have meetings. Um, she's used to sitting here talking to town officials um, about the housing crisis and the numbers. Which the numbers are at, we all know that, like.
So I think that the popular media, and I think it's international media, is talking about couch surfing, and I think couch surfing is a hook. Right, and I don't know, so, and I, and I get it, like, you're running a really difficult thing, and it's, you, you can't be peppy and go and talk to landlords. So I, I see that you need to help, but I wanna shift a little bit to what I talked about in the beginning, is that, is there. Do you guys ever get into creative ideas on the accessory dwelling unit regulations in New Ipswich, is that ever an idea that? You've, you've discussed?
Um, no.
Okay, so the idea there is that an in-law apartment can be designated as an accessory dwelling unit. So a small investment to, to improve the above a garage or something into an in-law apartment. Is one of the mechanisms that we have in our regulations, so that's an opportunity for people to like run a little business, right?
Right.
Just short money, get some extra materials, make a apartment.
Right.
Go through the town regulations, and then that might be a way to increase capacity.
Right.
Because it turns into a revenue stream, and people have never been a landlord before, hey, this Shelter From the Storm. We have some a little bit more guaranteed money, and we can basically like incubate business. Through the accessory dwelling unit.
And it sounds like that communication thing is key with a landlord, because as soon as you say, oh, we wanna use this for um. Um, you know, homeless housing or low income housing, like whatever you say, it's like, ah, what kind of people are gonna be in here?
And no, for real, they do, they need to be educated, and it hasn't, it really, and I have no, nothing else left to say about them, because. They had, they don't know, right, they don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, I mentioned it to San Ken, but this has just been, you know, something that we've been pushing, we haven't really had a need before. There is a need now, going forward, there's probably gonna be a need.
What do you think caused it, what do your colleagues think is?
A lot of it is, you know, a lot of it is the increase of um. Inflation, yeah, just.
And you're gonna see it in a couple of years, when the, the housing is gonna crash.
Yeah.
And people are gonna be paying mortgages on houses that were overpriced.
Right.
Millsboro County has the highest median rent, which is part of the price, right? It, is eighty thousand dollars take home, would be four taxes, is that like, you gotta hit an hourly rate to make eighty thousand?
Yeah, yeah, it must be.
So it's like, right, it's seventeen sixty-four was our, like, our number that.
That's a big drop for the town, right, I don't think there's a lot of forty dollar drop on the jobs.
No, no, there's not, that's what Erica was just talking about, we're like.
Part of the problem, Jason, is that, I, my understanding is that even carpenter, carpenter assistant wages are more than that, right? Like adding all those accessory dwelling units, aren't, it, it's not gonna be a load to drop those, you know, numbers, because. The need is so great, and like Bruce was saying, even if fifty went on tomorrow, I'm sure they'd be under.
There's pent up demand, that's just there.
However, we can start. No, it's good. And I like the challenge, right, challenges make education happen, so, but if we need one unit in the whip switch. And we do a call to action, hey, does somebody have a big space in their garage, set it up as an ADU and do a commitment here, that's one, right? Single point alike, that would alleviate pressure, and then maybe next year, and the next year after that, then it can start expanding.
What is Friendship Manor, Friendship Manor's position right now with that building? Are they planning to try to do anything with it again?
No, I think they're going through some zoning regulations, if I remember correctly.
Are they gonna come for us?
Yeah, there's, there, he was working on it, I don't know if they had it zoned differently. And they have to work on the different zoning of the building before they can move forward with the next step. But it's, it's moving forward, there's been meetings, I don't, I have lost touch with him in the past month, so I need to, I was talking to Erica at a meeting last the other night. And she said I need to, I need to get back on the calls, so I think soon, eventually, I mean, he wants to make it into. To rooms to rent, affordable rooms to rent, again, we've been having a little bit of a problem with affordable.
Yes.
Affordable, your regular bill pays an employee making sixteen dollars an hour, is not going to be able to.
That's thirty-two thousand a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's way below that two thousand dollar.
Right. So, it just, so, so the rooming houses, they started, you know, started to charge three to four hundred dollars. A week for a room.
Bucks of a month.
A week.
I know, but you take that four hundred, that's four, and.
So that's why we're saying affordable, when I spoke with them, I'm like, I'm, I'm not interested in being in this conversation unless it's affordable. And he said, I'm only interested in affordable, like, don't, don't, don't do this if you can't make it, so people. Can make it, you know, so, because, you know, the average person on disability is getting eleven hundred dollars a month, so. I mean, how does one of them? They don't, so, no, he's definitely making it affordable. He is, so he's making, moving forward with that, and I hope something comes up soon where he can, I don't know when his next meeting is and who he's meeting with, but. Um, yeah, so I'll be at one of the meetings that he's, he had asked that we, Erica and I go, so.
Yeah, I don't understand what happened with that, because it should already be zoned, because there were already. What it was before.
People, yeah, it's, something is a mess there, and they have to get it figured out, it's not zoned correctly, I guess, for what they wanna do, so.
And that may be how like maybe the state ties into a funding mechanism for them, or?
I'm trying to remember all what he said, but he was going on about it, and it's like, yeah.
Types of buildings.
Yeah, so, something.
As the ex-official on the zoning board, do you have any knowledge of the zoning process for Friendship Manor?
Yeah, we had um, somebody come through um, several months ago. And uh, you're looking to uh, turn that into something, there was a, they gave us the floor plan for it. And there was just a lot of rooms with um, shared kitchen facilities and shared living room facilities. Or entertainment room facilities type of thing, um, you know. We listened to them, and they, we asked them to um, to come back with, you know, some more definite plans. And they had some, within a couple of weeks, they just retracted the uh, the whole thing.
So they pulled back, they pulled back their communication?
Oh.
Was that the same people?
Yeah, I thought they withdrew the application.
That original, that was for a rehab center, wasn't it?
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
Oh, no, we're not, yeah, we're.
That one was, but now they've turned to Greenville, I think, if I understand.
Oh, so you're talking, the, we may have, application has been with, gone. Not the room, not.
Not the rooming.
They haven't seen anything.
They haven't seen anything.
Oh, okay, alright.
Because you did say, in one of our staff meetings or whatever, that they, they took that to Greenville. I don't know whether it's been approved by Greenville or not for the, um.
Right, one of the mill buildings on Chamberlain Street is, one, they've been working at it for a while, it will continue on for a while. They keep coming, you know, they have to fix things, come back, present, you've got another month.
As far as a rooming.
No, here, rehab, no, no, okay, so they haven't got it, okay, so they're waiting on, it must be working on something, because it was, he's. Really pushing through for that, so, we should be doing soon, I'll have to, I'm gonna, I was just thinking, I'm gonna touch base with him and see where he's at with it. So, I did, across the street, I did sort of mention, when all this was going. Um, through, like when we're talking about the transitional shelter, when Linda, the director, came and met, we thought to ask the Congregational Church. About their house there, if they would be willing to turn that into something like that. They sounded interested at the time, they just had people there, so, I don't know if it's something when it becomes empty, if they would consider. Doing something like that, that would be great. I know they have this con, you know, this thing where they, the person cleans and plows. Um, the facility and little rent, so, but anyway, that could be discussed potentially. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but it's, I kind of put a bug in. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but it's, I kinda put a bug in. A year, couple of, you know, we, about a year or two ago already, if we could use it.
But then the church also probably needs the rent, although, the person that lives there, oh.
We would pay the rent.
You would pay the rent.
If we have somebody in there using it, they would get paid rent. So, and they could pay their plowing and their cleaning, they're that way too, so it's an option to discuss when it becomes available.
So I have a question, I, I'm having a hard time understanding what the scope of this. Because it sounds like one unit would significantly re- relieve the burden. And, but that to me, sounds like we might be getting. One or two families every eight months, is that about the scope of it?
Right, so, for, for the transitional shelter side of it, I mean, I think housing in general is another topic. I mean, I don't know where we could go with that, this is just the transitional, a transitional.
Dealing with is what I'm.
Right, that would be super helpful if we could have a transitional apartment.
One transitional, and we need to be very specific, I think, but, and I think this is helping me too, thank you. It's a transitional apartment.
Right, it's meant to get somebody on their feet.
It's a rotating person, a family or whoever.
Right.
And it would be like, eight months.
Okay, yeah, so my ADU comments is not transitional, my ADU comments is the housing.
Right, right, there's, there's, there's goal, there's, there's soul, because there's a need.
Part of the cause.
Right, there's a need for, for it all, there's a need for an emergency pop-up shelter, there's a need for transitional apartment, there's a need for more housing. There's need for elderly housing.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, Greenville Falls wasn't even accepting, they weren't even, did she say she would even, should mail out an application, they were not, you could not mail it back. They were not accepting applications, that's how high their waitlist was, is.
So, for, so there's the whole application process that you spoke of, right? How many people do you, would you say you turned down and then do you continue to track those people? Do you have engagement with them to find out? You know, what they're doing or if they're just permanently displaced and out in the woods? You know, like we're kinda going.
Well, if, if you turn them down.
That don't fit into the model for a shelter, yeah, like, what's that other, cause that's probably a, a larger even percentage. It sounds like they, you know.
Yeah, yeah, mental health, cause a lot of people end up homeless, cause they, they just get overwhelmed, they can't work, they can't organize themselves, right? So, is that part of what you're talking about?
Yeah, like do you have a feeling for, cause some of, um, I believe, I, I thought it was comments that you had made or somebody else made, that there's a lot of people. Like that would do it seasonally, go live in a tent or live in their car and just sort of park here or there or tent somewhere. But then they'd go and find a spot for the winter, um. And that's not really available because like the beds are even all tied up now, like throughout the good weather. All the shelters are overwhelmed with people. So is there a greater population that's actually just living out in the elements than what we understand?
Um, so, in, in general or like in our, in basically our town, in our community?
Track or try to engage with those people down the line, do, do you ever see them come back?
Yeah, they'll come back, so, you know, sometimes we'll just have to. Usually if it's, I know at one spot, then it's owned to the next thing, it's a hotel for a little while, it's. Get in line at the shelter for a bed, it's.
So they're kind of just.
Paul, the rooming house in Antrim, there's a rooming house in Antrim that rents rooms, there's one in Jaffrey, so. The one in Antrim, it's Maplehurst in Antrim, so, well, get them on, I'll run there. And then hopefully something opens up where maybe they could, they'll stay with a friend for a little while and then. Sometimes they'll be okay for a little while and then they'll walk back up again and say, you know what I'm saying, so it's just, it could be, depending on the situation, it can be.
What's the label for that? Cause I was counting like all the people I'm close with and I have like a half a dozen people who live that way. Right, but what's the label for that? What would that nod the whip switch or the general, like, what, how do you describe that? Is that couch surfing?
Um, yeah, a couch surfing.
Is that close enough?
If you don't have a permanent resident, you're homeless.
So that what you described is?
Homeless.
Homeless and a couch surfing style?
Same thing.
Okay.
Same thing, yeah, it's just what it looks like in different areas.
Understood.
So, one of the things then, would that, what's the success rate for somebody like that and what, is that even really what that, what you're? Obviously, you're, you're, you can have compassion for that, but is there really a, is there really a fix to that type of a mentality? And you're, and are we, are we setting up, are we looking to set up an apartment for, for that? You know, that type of a, of a homeless person or are we looking for somebody that's been displaced and it's. It's a family that's, that's, you know, they've come along, come under hard times, you know, there's, there's. If somebody's willing to do, to move around and bounce around, kind of, not really because they, they're, they just don't have focus.
Yeah.
That's a different story than, than somebody that's.
And they're not, that kind of situation, they're not fit for what we, the program that we run, okay? Cause there was a situation that I was just dealing with last week and we would not put her in the shelter, okay? She had, had mental illness, not that we're discriminating against mental illness, but she.
Yeah.
Was becoming, creating drama with other landlords as it was, cause she was staying with her mom in Jaffrey apartment. And she was creating drama there, um.
So I guess to that, to your question, do you guys, when you turn somebody like that down, is there, is there a way to track that? That individual further down the line, is there a way to know, like, obviously you're, we're, we're looking to house. One person for eight months or their family for eight months, all the people that, that don't fit. What's the tracking mechanism for that, for that?
They just, they had somehow have to figure it out themselves too, not a miracle worker.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah.
They figure it out, is it figured out or is it?
And if they're not accepted now.
Right, so then this individual just, you know, I put them up for a few nights in a hotel and told them when they get their social security check. Cause both of them weren't working, they're both on social security, I told them that they had to have to start paying. On the twenty-seventh, I only, I did three nights, I got them, you know, three nights that were getting kicked out of her mom's place. Um, sheriff was showing up, okay, you have three nights, you get paid on the twenty-seventh, you're telling me, so you can take your funds now and you can pay for your hotel room. Or you can be motivated and you're gonna, you're waiting for, I told her, she's either waiting for a shelter bed to open up. In Keene, there was just nothing open at the moment between hundred nights and, you know, family shelter, I said, so. As soon as a bed comes available, you're over at the shelter, you know, that doesn't mean that we're paying for a hotel continuously. So you can stay in a hotel and be comfortable, no, you go to the shelter and then you go from there and they'll help you try to place them in something permanent. And she found something on her own, a, a room to rent from a relative, so she was, uh, cause I, I'm. There's only so much you can do with these people.
Yeah.
And they run it, some of them, so you have to be very firm with them.
Yeah, and I guess it was that element in that demographic that concerned me the most and I think you touched on it in our conversation last year. About some of the stuff, like, that people going into shelters in the bigger cities. That's what's looking to be legislated, like, at the state level, like, to try to find a local fix. You know, like the state's gonna try to fix it for us.
Rushing out to the cities and clogging them down.
Exactly, and, yeah, inundating the cities, um, cause when they get there, they ask where you're from and then. Or we've put them there already in a hotel room for three nights or a week or whatever it may be. And then if they end up on the streets, they're on the streets of Keene, Nashville, Manchester, whatever these cities are, so it's kinda like. Busing people out and then.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, and they have taken that for us, we have, they've been from the whip switch, they've been in the shelter in Keene, they've been, you know, we've had, they have had our people. They have, they will, if they have room, they still will take them, but they don't. In July, the shelters were full, what does that look like for this winter?
Well, that, what, how do we understand that report? So is it, so we have a, we're in the middle of a different pattern this year?
Cause we know that's. Something to do with immigration.
Well, but is, are we in a diff, maybe, but are we in a different pattern this year? Like, is the forecast for this winter really bad?
Um, well, when the shelters are full in July, that doesn't look good, so, I'm guessing in the, in the housing. Hasn't changed much, you know, there's that backlog of people not buying as many houses because the housing market's so expensive, right? So then you get your typical renter who would look for a house to buy, that's not looking for a house to buy right now. They're renting for a while the market goes down, okay?
The answer, Jason.
So it's all clogged up, you see, we're not getting the relief out of the, the people, the, the ones that could buy houses, aren't buying houses, so they're not leaving. So we can't move people along, it's just clogged up.
What'd you say?
I think that's the answer, so it's probably, I think it's like the interest rates are going up, harder to buy a house, prices of houses are high. And the stagnation in terms of the, the, the.
Yeah, less turnover in rentals, people find a place, they stick it out.
Them are all parts of it, I talked to um, family in South Carolina. They said, in them cities down there, upwards of seventy percent of the sales are going to corporations. For single-family houses, because they're buying them up and renting them to people. Now, I haven't seen that much here, but, but, and it's corporate, it's not just corporations, it's massive corporations like. Vanguard and BlackRock.
Proliferation of rental units.
In China.
And then, and, and they driven, they play a part in driving up the prices nationwide.
Cause they can like stick to a price and you gotta pay it.
And they're buying them sight unseen, I mean, there's no.
So there's a lot of forces at.
So there's that, and then I think the illegal immigration, we may not be facing it and dealing with it in our town. But we're feeling it.
Yeah.
In our system, nationwide, you look at the medical system, it's overwhelmed. And I speak from experience, having had to be in it for a couple of months with the family, um, it's bad. And I think the housing, same thing, if the shelters are full, I would guess, that's playing a big role. So these nationwide politic things are not so removed from us, they come home.
Right.
What's the likelihood of people like freezing this winter?
Oh, oh, freezing?
Like just freezing, like just, yeah, out, outside in a tent, and they shouldn't be.
Not likely.
Okay, that's where I took it.
Yeah, so, we don't, we have cold winters here, it could freeze, I mean, I'll do what I can to help people, so that doesn't happen. I don't wanna be on the front paper saying that I didn't help somebody because then they throw them to death, I mean.
I get that, but I'm just.
But you do hear that.
In the winter, we do take, I mean, I, I told someone, a couple of months ago, they could go to the campground and tent. And get a, get a tent and ten, cause they were looking for a place and didn't have, you know, their own, whatever the situation was. Go, there's tents, Southwest, the cap agencies has tents, have tents and see if you can make for these, for people, if that's what we have, that's what we have. But when it gets cold, some people choose to do that still and they, they can, that's their choice. But we all, there are other options available and if it's that cold, we, and worst comes the worst, we, we have to. We have to find some place to go.
Okay.
Yeah, and if that looks like a hotel room, then that looks like a hotel room, so. That's.
And I think another reason the cities are being overwhelmed is because that's where the charities have gone.
Right.
And so if you want food, I, I was um, pretty close to a guy. For two years down in Worcester, who was homeless, him and his wife. And I'm not gonna say that they're the classic story or anything like that, I'm just tell, tell you what, he told me is. There is no hunger going on in the homeless community.
Yeah, no.
Because you're always within ten minutes in Worcester of somewhere that will give you a free meal.
There's a lot of soup kitchens and food entries everywhere.
So I think for, to feel like the cities are saying, quit sending us your people, well, it's not really that we're sending them there, but. That's where they've congregated and so these charities have gone, there are all these soup kitchens and.
Right.
Things like.
Resources, there's more resources that way.
They're all there, and this guy did end up, um, he tried to get out of it, but he said he liked it.
Yeah, some people do, some people. Yeah, some people, that's what they choose, so that's, some, eh, that, that's what they choose, so it's not all, it just depends on the case. Some want to live in a tent and be by themselves, I mean, you can't, you can't bodily pick them up and bring them to the shelter. You can encourage them to, there's caseworkers that, um, manage, that go out to the tent sites and, in the cold and try to get people to come in. And some of them will and some of them did prefer to just to stay there.
So do you feel adequately supported with resources, you know, from the town government, I guess, you know, cause that's. What you hear, you know, before us, like the two boards, uh, what can we do, yeah, like to further.
Right.
You know, aid you, but it sounds like it's a private solution really, um, you know, with the property owners locally. So put that call out, which we can certainly do.
Right.
And, you know, uh, Ron came in this evening to tape this for us, so it'll go on to, you know, the. Uh, new whip switch television, you know, the public access channel, and then also um, YouTube and hopefully get picked up. You know, by the ledger, just to kinda like further get that word out that we, you know, are looking for assistance. Uh, with shelter with the storm, or shelter from the storm, um, you know, from the local uh, property owners, right?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, we have seen different situations too in um, town too, where. I've noticed that some people have come over from Massachusetts now to come over to rent apartments here. Cause it's a little cheaper here than it is there, I'm right on the border, so we have that also to think about, like, there's just, there's just that. So there's other people coming over to, to rent in our town to try to get an apartment.
So I'd like that to the speed to the ADUs, if we could loosen or change our regulations. That may help that scenario, like for our town, like for that, that demographic, uh, specifically.
Yeah.
So we need, you know, one, one open apartment building or one open apartment.
For transitional.
For a transition.
And it, and it should be specific, like one unit for transitional.
If it's starting to get.
I would agree, that would help you immediately.
Right.
And you have the support from shelter from the storm, that they'd come in and manage it.
They already talked about that and choose. Already okayed that, we've met with her, should meet with you guys.
Yeah.
Is there, is there anything that needs to be met in the, in the, the rental unit? To, to meet your, the, whatever, regulation in the, in the, for, for you guys to actually put people up into it? Is that, is this, you know, if somebody was gonna set up your, set up a, a ADU at their home and they wanted to do that?
Bedrooms, bedrooms, bathroom, shower.
What's actually required?
What is?
So, um, I think they have one-bedroom units and they have two-bedroom units. Um, so, we know, obviously prefer the two-bedroom because we deal with a lot of um, families, you know, children.
Accessibility on, like as far as.
Not really, handy, no, we, basically take what we can, I mean, they'd have to look at it and, you know, make sure it be. It's approved like health-wise and, you know, that all the inspections are up to date and all that, I would imagine, but I don't know.
How firm on the idea that every child should have a bedroom? Is that a firm idea or is that flexible, like a two-bedroom?
Yeah, so.
An adult can be separate from children.
Flexible, so, some cases, like the mom has slept on the couch, so, like, depending on if the boy and the girl, you know, they have the separate rooms depending on the age, so.
So they kinda figure it out, and then, but there's a little bit of flexibility from that idea.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I would assume you said mom that had five kids or whatever, like, not gonna find five bedrooms.
No, we have bunk beds in some of the apartment units and so, but we can't, we have to meet regulations at, at all.
Certain things.
Yeah, they have to, we can't over, we didn't, we, we don't do that because then landlord gets in trouble and, you know.
Yeah, well, which is why.
We don't have, we don't have, we, then we're on a, out of an apartment, and that's not good, so we stick to the rules and regs for sure.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the community, obviously we, we've, things have been shifting to, to profit. Obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of building, a lot of selling and, and, and you are focused on, on the, your income off of that. And that's what's driven a lot of people away from, you know, potentially get, putting up a, a low-income house or a reasonably priced house. When you can, this is the market where you can make, make money on, on selling real estate. Um, but, then you, you obviously have to have the, have the knowledge and have, have this kinda conversation to know the need. And then privately, people step in and do it, you know, as far as doing too much through the board and you, you can change regulation. And you can change some of your, some of the, the ways you can get ADUs, but, uh, to really make it work, it, I think it needs to be driven through. A private, a private.
Private operation, but when the landowner can look at it as a revenue stream.
Yeah.
They'll pay for itself, expand the value of their property, that is something I think that we can do. Make the regulations a little bit easier, popular, like when you get calls again, oh yeah, you're looking at an ADU, yeah, we got a little package for you. And you would, we would help put it together, right? So yeah, you're right, but the operation has to be not government.
No, no, yeah, and then I think.
Trying to say, take that operation and put it on the citizen, who wants to take advantage of their property, put an ADU.
Yeah.
So I like that separation. So I like that separation.
Yeah, definitely.
Sam has a question.
Yeah, does anybody ever, I didn't hear anything about it, but. It between, if you're driving around, there's an awful lot of vacant buildings around. Can those buildings be converted into housing units? I mean, you got Jaffrey up there, there's a school up there that's vacant.
There's a vacant manufacturing plant.
Huh?
Right near Dunkin' Donuts, there's a vacant manufacturing plant.
Yeah.
And it's so unfortunate that it's just that crumbling.
Wow, tough burn now.
If if you're not, you know, if you're not willing to crumbling so bad, it would cost a fortune to rehab them, but. You know, vacant buildings just sit there and do nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got number two. So I think Sam, so that's the whole point, so there's a sequence, at least in my thinking, right? Is this communicate the problem, communicate the opportunities. And I think what you're talking about is an opportunity, and somebody has to bite on that.
Yeah.
Right, a a property owner has to bite on that. Why would I do that? Oh, there's a big demand. If I do a little bit of renovation, follow the ADUs, figure out what they need from a building permit. Yeah, maybe, maybe I'll put five units in. They would have to come in front of us for an exception potentially, right? But that's the education and the outreach first, but we need somebody to bite.
Actually, I don't know, there's too many, too many buildings here in 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 New Ipswich, but the one I'm talking about is up on. In Jaffrey, it's an old school, it's a city, doing nothing. I mean, they can, I don't know if it leaks or whatever the condition is, but if it's got a decent roof and it can be, go in. And you can put a lot of, say, small apartments in that, schools in that.
Yeah.
For having people come in and just like that, so you can rotate them. You, they go in, they do the thing. This organization says you got eight months and then you gotta be gone. Well, that particular building would give you a lot of units for an emergency situation. Because I'm myself, I drive around, I see all these vacant buildings and people are building new ones. They're building new ones and just take, what the hell, is that already there and just refurbish it? And use it.
Who knows what that is?
And that would have to be done though privately, so essentially you're.
Yeah, I don't know who owns that school. I mean, the town owns the school in Jaffrey, I would presume that building and that land. If it's a school, it's owned by the town, it's not privately owned.
The uh planning board. But I believe that is a private, that was a Saint.
Well, I don't know what it was, but.
Saint Patrick's School, yeah, so. So but I mean, essentially, that type of a, that type of a project would have to be done privately. So you'd have to, you have to go through and say, alright, what is the, what is, what's the incentive? What's the incentive for somebody to to shell out the money just to, you know, renovate it now?
Doesn't, wouldn't the government, you know, like you said, they pay for some of the the people. But there would, there has to be some kind of ins, there's incentive for a lot of things, so there gotta be incentive for somebody that owns that. To be able to go in and refurbish it, and the state or the top or the state would help. Pick up some of the tab for him, because I mean, we all see it on the news, everybody's picking up the tab for everything. And just, you know, I pick up this, I pick up that. I was just watching TV the other day when. You got now, you might just really don't, but they got the Army Navy game, one of the Patriots. And they got no, people have had rooms down there in hotels. And they've been told they canceled them. Why? Cause they're shipping all these immigrants and throwing them into a damn hotel. That we all are paying for.
And we don't wanna do that.
No, I, I'm all for it, but this is all about the city. But these people paid to get to get able to go to that game, and now they're getting thrown out because we got. You know, people being shipped in from God knows where. And I mean, that's not fair.
Nope.
Bottom line, that's my whole thing, you take care of your own before you worry about others. And you put a wall down there about four miles high, so they can't even crawl.
Alright, so I I appreciate all the sentiment, we're gonna like bring this back to New Ipswich.
To tie that back to New Ipswich, though, the sense of community in town, this is getting this education out there to people. And to and to see what what you can really come up, come up with, right? You you see what the local builders, see what, see what the any property owners in town, what can be done? And I I think that's, I that's why I kinda, what is the, what is the outreach? What's the, how systematic is the outreach from from your organization as far as in in the? Any organization to to get somebody to to agree to a to an apartment that they're willing to to set aside.
Probably a big part of your outreach is informing us because we come into contact with so many people.
And and if this is the case, that's, I guess that's, if this is my most of your outreach, then that's worth me knowing, right? If I if I walk away from here and I don't do anything with it, then that, then I'm wasting that, wasting this meeting. Right, and I and, but if I don't know that this is the outreach, this is the extent of the outreach.
Yep.
Um then I could pretty easily walk away and and keep it to myself.
So like, like when we did the uh pipeline activity, I'll just comment on that. All we did was we sat around, how do we get letters in the paper, how do we put flyers in the logroom mats? And it was all an outreach thing.
Yeah.
And we had twenty and thirty people just educating.
Yeah.
Educate, 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 repeat, 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 creative ideas, find somebody you're burned out, you switch over to somebody else. And and I can respect the fact that the workers, the people actually doing stuff, they're exhausted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it has to be kind of a rally around.
Yeah, yeah.
And the point here wasn't to make you feel more burned, it was like, what can we do?
Yeah, I appreciate it, cause I have felt the past year, it's it's been a burden, I'm not gonna lie, it's just been really tough. And um it's been really frustrating, cause we're on the front lines and we're trying to get this done and. Um trying to help people, and so they don't freeze, that's right. And so, you know, there's meetings, all these meetings, and the meetings are great, right? The meetings are good, but the meetings, instead of just talking at meetings, we need to actually do something. That's where we're looking to be productive at the meetings that I'm going to. We, the one that I attend monthly, that's homeless coalition, that we're we're out, we're we're making, we're, we need to make progress. Like, we can't just sit around and talk about it anymore. There's just, there's no time to sit around and talk about it. So that's where we're at, we have, we have, we have to do something, it's a problem.
Yeah. What what does Monday, you know, what is, what is the next day look like then as far as after a meeting like this? What is, what what would be, what would you hope to see? You know, what is the instant reaction to somebody with this with this education, you know, is it? Do you tomorrow, do you call, you know, what what's the, what's the plan?
I'll go to the um next group meeting and they'll ask um what's going on in each town, um if they have any updates. So I'd like to update them on what New Ipswich has. I mean, they have like, they have updated them with Friendship Men are saying, hey, guys. You might have like um rooms to rent available, you know, um soon. They're, you know, these guys are working on this, they're going through the meetings, the process, things have to get, you know, worked on. But we might be having potential, you know, rooms to rent, and they're like, great, that's really good. Um I updated them on the um the non-comment over there, so that's an um different thing going on there. Yeah, but at least it's something for that.
I was wondering though, would they have the room there, it's a different, whole different ballgame.
I asked.
Well, it's a, it's a completely.
They would like to do something at that some point if available, and but what they're focusing on right now is that.
Yeah.
And I get it, I didn't push it, I didn't push it, but I did ask.
But I do know that it's owned by a couple.
Right.
And then they're allowing this organization to use it.
They are.
If this organization, you know, that could change.
She'll keep an eye. I am in contact with her, like, I've been in contact with her, mhm. And she knows, like, or wishes, like, I'm like, I could use that something, I know, but this is where, that's where they're at right now. They were at something before and now that this is where they're at, and I get it, and I'm not gonna even think about that, you know.
It's another private, private outreach thing, that is great, that's.
So anyway, sometimes, so I'd love to, yeah, I'd love to say, you know, potentially we have like a emergency. Um shelter spot to put somebody, and it doesn't have to get used every month, you know, the Quaker House isn't used all the time. Just when we need it, so it can be empty, you know, so.
You know, like I even think about, so I have a camper on my property, recreational.
Oh, really? This is important.
No, but. Right, but I I'm not, so I don't use it all the time. And of course, in the winter, you really can't.
Right.
I mean. You could.
Plug them in.
Plug it in, well, yeah. But that is also an option for people for housing.
Is it?
But it's not, because our regulation states someone can only have that.
Right.
Living in it for six months.
Right, so we run that, cause we have one with each different town.
That's the cross.
But you said there's a need for temporary housing.
Emergencies, emergencies, a month.
That would be something different, right?
That would be a lot.
Problem solving.
Something like that wouldn't need to involve the town, it could involve a person talking to you. Which I guess in that aspect, it's involving the town, but and making arrangements.
Could use, have used that a month ago and, oh, yeah, mom and two children were looking for anywhere, anything and a camper.
And you need a place to sleep.
Right, a camper, would have taken a camper anywhere, anytime. Campers always don't work in certain parts of the years, we know, cause it's.
Right.
But like in, we'd taken a camper. For a little while.
And and the five cap, so that would be emergency, and I wanna kinda recap this and probably, I don't know what time it is, but.
Yeah.
So emergency is short, emergency is short, that's like a month or less. Transitional is temporary, eight months, with a hopeful path to permanent residency. There's transitional, I'm gonna call it chronic, cause I don't have a better word right now, but people would just coast surf and they, like to Jason, if they like it. They just wanna kinda move on. Uh and then there's a general lack of inventory in housing, the rental housing. And then there's another elderly population that is a challenge. Is there anything else in that list?
I know, that sounds, that sounds good.
Kind of comprehensive for us to kinda organize it and sort it out.
We didn't talk at all about the elderly.
The poor elderly, I know, um so the waitlist for them on certain complexes are um two years plus right now.
Two year waitlist?
Yeah, right, so, right, just for instance, Greenville Falls, I mean, I mean, SK management, I think they're. It could be a year to two, uh that's what they're at right now. Um so anything, when I say have anything, if even, I was talking to Erica today, even if there's another elderly complex to move. The people that, the elderly people that are taking up apartments, to move them on to these other spaces, and that frees up. Anything that can be, you know, done.
Move people on.
To move people on.
So elderly, elderly isn't the last, the one that we haven't really expanded on today.
Right, you said another Greenville Falls would be amazing.
How many units in Greenville Falls roughly, like sixty, fifty, forty?
Uh they in the third, is it thirty?
Is it that low, thirty?
Eight?
But we could just ballpark conversation, fifty, fifty elderly housing units would be like.
Maybe, I don't even know what they're at right now.
Okay.
I, that's, but like I said, she was, she's like, I can mail you one, but I'm not accepting.
Emergency, one transitional sum, that's temporary. Uh transitional chronic is, I don't know.
Nobody, a question mark, nobody knows.
And then housing general lack of inventory, maybe that's like the ADU, and then elderly community. Twenty, twenty-five, so eight twenty-five units. Just taking notes for myself, just so I can organize it in my head.
Okay, anything. I know there is a program, um I don't know what it entitles, it's through HUD. Um and it's for um town government, municipalities to apply for funding for housing. I don't know how it all works, I was just told about it, I have the email, I can forward it to you guys. It's a very nice program. To get some housing going.
For what?
To Jay?
Email to, to.
Oh, yeah, I just heard about it, and I've just told about it, it's just a grant program um through the towns. Um it's called Community Development Block Grant, and it supports community development activities to build stronger, more resilient communities. To support community development activities are identified through an ongoing process, um addressed, address needs as infrastructure, economic development projects. Public facility installation, community centers, housing, rehabilitation, public services. Just, yeah, I I have no idea what the loopholes are, it's through HUD, so there obviously there is some. But it might be a possibility to look through.
But it's, it's like something that we were looking to avoid.
Back to what you said.
Like that type of, like a public funded structure that we'd have to have another arm of government to oversee it.
Yeah, I don't know, really, this might be a little different, you might be, somehow you might, but I don't know.
Just that brief description sounded like.
It could.
The town would be the one who distributes the money to private, that's what it sounded like.
Right, to the.
To private individuals.
Which is a public housing, was a part of it.
A community center, it said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've tried to get a.
Well, yeah, but that got slipped in.
So it's worth looking into. It's a grant program, I, I was just told about it, so anything.
Now, does New Hampshire require public housing in every town? Cause I know in Mass, they require a certain percentage. Of housing in each town has to be public.
Which that may be coming down, like the pipe. So I don't know if there's a better, more creative way to get in front of it, so we have a system set up ahead of time.
Yeah.
Never worth it to try getting.
Cause you know me, Jason, I'm trying to remove out a reactionary.
Yeah, but in some of these things, you're better off reacting.
Yeah.
Because a preemptive move oftentimes is, was for nothing, because it never happened. Now look at, you just spent all this money and.
Well, no, the point, the point being, if we can set up a system where you're too private action, you're dealing with things.
Good luck trying to figure out what the wordage of any kind of law coming down, you. You'd miss it by one sentence. God, it's only weird if it.
I just want the last part, set your up switch, cause they gotta figure it out.
Yeah.
Yes, so statesmen pushing about how mandating that a certain percentage of new housing be even workforce housing.
Right.
Well, I forget what the other one is. That's even lower income than the workforce housing.
Yeah, but workforce housing isn't even low income. Because the average median, you can't even.
Well, we've talked about.
Low income housing, is they want to see a certain percentage of all new houses coming in. And a percentage for.
Low force, joke something. We have no housing.
Like whatever they.
Yeah, where you wanna live. Going forward, I think, I think we've gotten a lot of information, and I think we, we, what we were gonna go through and and. As a board go, kinda get points, what are points where, and that was, you know, things that Dee was looking to, see if we could, she wasn't game on.
Yeah.
Do we wanna do that? Do we wanna?
Yeah.
Have a.
So.
Get a, a uh sense of what's, what's.
Is is this, because I, I, there's more discussion, I think, that we can't have, not that it necessarily has to drag out too long, but. Um are we, are we involving Carrie or can we tell her that?
I think, I think uh if you wanted to, we're, we're basically gonna just discuss as the, as a board.
Housing in general.
Yeah, housing in general, and kinda what what our, what we feel are our.
With regulations, you can relax.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's not even what we can, what they, yeah.
Yeah, if you can get another Appleton Darton apartments up soon, that'd be great.
Exactly, how it can just make one appear.
Yeah, go for Bruce, drop a plan, we'll be good to go. So I'm good, you guys know, I'm just saying what the need is, I'm saying, you know, you've seen, there's numbers, there's, there's, it's not good. Um and this is where we're at, um everywhere is, they're, it's just to pass the board.
Yeah.
I know that Connecticut just, um you see the news or something, they just. But they just declare an emergency of housing or something.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Part of the coast surfing, I think, is, it's up there.
And yeah, we, I mean, appreciate.
The other day, yeah.
The, the uh, the information at the time.
Yeah.
It isn't, obviously, you hear about it, but you don't know.
Right.
Kind of.
Yeah, we don't meet people face to face like you do.
Right, and so, again, this town, you know, there's a lot of families in town and people take other people in, right? So it's been great, so it's not, it's not horrible, it's just not great. Cause it's still ha, it's still happening, and there's still situations here that's happening, just not at a large scale, okay, it's still happening. And at one point, it's, it doesn't happen much, it, it happens, and I've seen it more frequent in the past two years. And at one point, it's, it doesn't happen much, it it happens and I've seen it more frequent in the past two years than I'd like to.
Yeah.
So, there's different situations across the board.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It's definitely.
I know citizens may not even be aware that there's even any problems, you know?
Yeah, for real, I mean, they just, you know, people just go about their lives and they know, they hear on the news, it's a housing crisis, you know, but.
And if you're, if you know any young couples looking to start a family and a home, you know there's a housing crisis, cause they can't afford it. Too many working, can't afford a house.
You know, I have my um brother and sister-in-law, they're, they're in an apartment, they've been renting, they'd like to get into a home, but it's just not affordable right now for them to. You know, you need, you know.
Jen said might come to pass. You remember, you remember getting the paper and having a whole section of foreclosures?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That may happen.
Yeah.
And then that's.
Ten years ago, twelve.
Yeah, that becomes, then things go down and now we don't need a full-time building, no.
Yeah, I know, that's what they say is gonna happen, I don't know, we'll see.
Nobody knows.
Yeah, I don't know the future, so, right, well, thank you guys for the name.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Yep.
Cause you guys just paid for the night.
We get stipends.
Wow, so.
It's legal.
Oh, yeah, we don't change, oh, I was here forever, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think uh as far as our main points from her and also some of the points that we. That we uh, what, what the board, what the planning board's role is, not just individually, but what what the board's role can be. Um obviously, that's, that's definitely a, a discussion that's, it's a, it's, it's not clean necessarily, there's gonna be a. There's potentially regulations that can be changed, but obviously there's a, there's good and bad to that. Um and also, you know, what's gonna work, what's, I personally think community is, is the main driving to this, that, that if you. If you try to regulate it, you're not, you're, or change regulation to to drive it, you're, you're gonna have. There's gonna be negative impact to that, and I think that if you don't, as far as the, what you're saying.
It's too bad, like life in New Ipswich, it can't be, cause then, could anyone take anyone in?
Yeah, and that, and I think.
Because we don't even know if there's people out there that want to have people in their home for. You know, company for whatever reason, that have the room.
Yeah.
That don't want.
To what, to what I'm saying, I think that if you, if we, if we turn around and we, we loosen up regulation to to allow a, a certain type of building. Or we incentivize to to do uh an apartment complex and that's. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're, we're gonna end up getting this, the housing crisis under control. How do we, how do we, how do you regulate through that, that you need low income and this is, you're gonna set your rate for low income cleanly? Cause we see that, we do, we do jobs that are low income, like that subsidized through the state, cause it is subsidized in other ways. It's not just a, it's not as, it's not necessarily a, a very clean process.
Right, so I have an idea, I have this uh idea and Dee and I talked quickly about this.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I'm a market force guy, right, cause I wanna make sure that people feel.